Council meeting to order, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk call roll please.
Brown, here. Evans?
Here.
Foodie, here. Grattan?
Here.
Merle's, here. Schuster?
Here.
This time I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Motion by Brown.
Second.
Second by Foodie. Any further discussion? Questions or comments? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Group minutes of previous meetings, there was motion not effective.
So.
Motion by Schuster.
Second.
Second by Merle's. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Group minutes of intervening. Motion by Grattan. Second by Schuster. Any further discussion on those? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. This time we have public appearances. Daniel Yonkey from Piggly Wiggly presenting a donation from the Roundup at the Register. Dan?
All right. If you don't know me, I'm Daniel Yonkey. My wife and I own the Tinkerberry Store in Juneau. In an effort to continue to support our community, City of Juneau, which I've done all my life and surrounding communities, we are happy to support the Juneau Public Library as well as other events. We just got done $7,000 for the EMS, for local EMS units, $1,000 we presented to Juneau EMS. We have things lined up for the Juneau Rec Department in next March. We have the fire departments, which we do every October. So, we work together and I thought it was a great organization to give money back to the City of Juneau. Roundup contributed $2,933.19. We had donations of $250. Brothfry was $120. In the auction I put together, we raised $700. So, on behalf of my wife and I, we'd like to present to the City of Juneau Public Library, $4,003.19. So I just want to get a picture with whoever, mayor, or whatever you want to do and...
With the check?
I would like to thank you for your generosity and just being that unsung hero for our community. So, thank you.
That's what we're here for. Got it?
Yeah, I was gonna...
She's young, we probably...
Did you use a filter?
No.
Funny ear?
I know, funny ear.
No, I was like, it was smooth, you know? Yeah, my thing.
Yeah. Yeah, wave in there.
You get on the other side.
Well, I ran out of paper checks, so I had to go with this one.
When there's that many zeros, it's tough.
I ran out of paper checks, I had to go with the big one. So, we just love supporting the City of Juneau and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, Dan, for always doing that for our community.
Yes, it's amazing how well you do with those Roundup, Register, I mean...
People come forward. It's, uh, my, if you don't know by now, my heart's throats is in Juneau. But there's surrounding communities that need help too. So I will continue to do that as long as the Lord lets me in His serve. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? See none, move on. Communications, I have, "Thank you, City of Juneau. Thank you for your thoughts and the beautiful flower arrangement you sent for Dave's mother's wake and funeral." It was greatly appreciated. Dave and Eileen Grattan. Thank you, David, for the, thank you. Sympathy with you and your family at the loss of your mother. So, anything for communications from the clerk?
No communications.
Moving on, we have approved payments of bills. We have checks for $264,267.09. No vouchers. Electronic transfers of $164,680.47. Is there a motion to approve the payment of bills?
So moved.
Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? See none, roll call vote please.
Brown?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Foodie?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Merle's?
Aye.
Next, we have reports of officials, mayor, and the update on the Strassman land purchase. I assume they all got our correspondence. Megan?
Um, it should be linked. The correspondence, are you talking?
Between the minutes of the meeting that Jason and I had with the family and...
Yep, so the agenda and the minutes are linked on here. One thing I did not include was the handwritten letter that was received from the family.
I have that here.
Perfect.
"City of Juneau, attention Mayor Daniel Wagner, 405 Gil Street, Juneau. Regarding City of Juneau and land acquisition related to the East Oak Street Reconstruction Project. Dear City of Juneau, thank you for meeting with me and my family members to discuss your request for land purchase related to the East Oak Street cul-de-sac construction. I reviewed your correspondence dated May 31st, 2022, which summarized construction options A and B along with the discussion of purchase pricing. I have decided that I will keep my property as undisturbed farmland without plans to disrupt this land for the construction of the cul-de-sac. I am choosing to retain ownership of my two right-of-ways onto my farmland. I do not plan to develop this land currently. Sincerely, Dorothy A. Strassman." So unfortunately, it leaves us without an access road for construction because that was part of our plan, was that we would build a temporary access road from Center Street into the end of Oak Street to be able to work both ends towards the middle, which would have been very helpful. I guess with Highland Street only having probably the binder coat put on, or maybe not even having the binder coat put on by the time Oak Street construction starts, whatever, maybe it won't be such an issue. But it would have been helpful for some of the people at the far end of the East Oak Street to have a temporary parking spot, at least, that they don't have to walk two blocks to park their cars or whatever during the day. But though, we do have language in our contract that at the end of each workday, they should have access to the property, correct, Jason?
Correct.
The other alternative, I threw at Jason, I don't know if he had time to work on it or not, but before this meeting, I requested Jason look at, we do have a small parcel of city-owned property at the end of East Oak Street, if we could get some kind of minimized turnabout in there or turnaround there, not a full-fledged cul-de-sac of a 66-foot radius cul-de-sac, but it would be helpful at least to be able to help vehicles be able to navigate without turning into the last two driveways on each side of the street down there. Did you come up with anything on that, Jason?
Yeah, I emailed that to you a while back, I think to you too, Megan, didn't I? It showed, it showed the smaller cul-de-sac option like we talked about, but then I also showed like a hammerhead turnaround at the end there.
Okay.
I know like, I know Scott Carpenter is already, like, he gave me some like preliminary feedback or he had some questions on it or whatever, so I know that he received it, but...
I didn't receive it.
Okay, so...
We'll get probably for Megan at the end of the night.
Yeah, otherwise I can re, I'll plan on resending it too when I get back to my computer.
Does that look like a doable option?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not going to be, the cul-de-sacs obviously is not going to be to the size that the ordinance would dictate, but at least it would be something. I mean, your, your larger like garbage truck and whatever else, like we talked about, still might have to do kind of like a wide turn to kind of maneuver their way out of there, but at least, at least it would be something better than what they have currently out there. And it would, it would allow a little bit more options, like your standard vehicles and stuff should be able to turn around via that cul-de-sac river, but it'd just be bigger. Like I said, garbage trucks or delivery trucks that might have to do kind of a wide turn action in it to turn out.
And essentially, the last two properties wouldn't have driveway aprons. They'd be going right off to the turnabout area.
Pretty much, yeah, yep.
So, I don't know, like I said, there were, when we had the public meeting there, our information meeting, one of the concerns from one of the end properties was, well, now if you're not getting land, everybody's going to be turning around in our driveway again, like they have for years. So, kind of thought about it after a few days, I came up with that option. Asked Jason to put the pencil to that to see how that would work, but I guess we'll have to look at it in Public Works or whatever and approve it there, send it along. But I think it's a viable option, but like I said, the cul-de-sac would have definitely been better. It certainly gave the family an opportunity to expand their property at minimal cost, or at least there'd be utility infrastructure in there and that would, my opinion, they're really missing the boat by not allowing us to take such a small portion. And then they're also, they've still retained ownership of a parking lane and terrace area on the south side of Center Street. Paying taxes on that every year too, which we were willing to take away from them or take over from them. I thought we had a real informative meeting. I thought it went well that night. Jason and I pretty much entertained the family that night, but it was overwhelming for Dorothy. Dorothy's in her eighties and it's, you know, it was kind of overwhelming for her. You know, I think this will be a lesson with her, we better continue to one-on-one. But when you've got a family that big, everybody's got an opinion and we have to respect their opinion. I feel that, I feel negotiations are over with. I don't want to bother the family anymore with Dorothy. That's where we're at.
So is there any lot across the street from that last brick home that's on that street?
There's a portion of, of land east of both that are driveways, on each side of the street. Yeah, we, we have a portion of land, a very small portion.
It's only on the south side.
Only on the south side?
Yeah, the north, the north side is retained by whoever that last, his name is...
The first house.
Yeah. He, he owns all the way to the edge of where Strassman's property ends. But on the south side, there is a 20-foot wide strip of land that the city owns going, going southerly. But unfortunately, that's in the wrong direction from what we need it to be for an access route.
Unfortunately. I learned something. I thought, I thought it was equal on both sides.
No.
That's the hammerhead option.
Right, yep.
All right, very good. Any other questions on that? Moving on, update on the 270 East Kin Street project or option, I guess. I'll turn it over to Andrew. You can kind of, the last communication we had with corporate counsel in regards to...
I sent my letter that we discussed right away. Sometime after that, got a reply from corporate counsel explaining that it was moving on toward the sale process, the tax sale, and that's where it headed. I provided that correspondence to the mayor and to the clerk and so Megan has it, you have it. But right now, I haven't heard anything since that. That was the most recent response. So that's, that's where it's headed. I expressed that the city is interested in getting the property cleaned up, but doesn't want to be in the chain of ownership. And she acknowledged receipt of our letter and understood our position. I think she does understand our position. And hopefully, it'll still, still go to the person who's going to clean it up. Have to say, and I haven't heard anything more as far as scheduling a date of the sale or anything.
Just wanted to add, she did provide some information in regards to tax balance summary, and she kind of gave the breakdown or breakdown of, you know, principal taxes that are due, looks like the last 10 years they haven't been paid.
Yeah, went back a little further than you realized it was.
Yeah, than the four, four years that I thought.
Well, and see, normally a county would foreclose after four years. I've never seen one that goes this long, but the reason it's gone this long is because they're not really interested in getting the property back.
Right, right. So, I've included in your packet as well, the link to that. So, it lists all principal taxes and the amount of $22,485.57, but only City of Juneau principal taxes, interest, and penalties due would be, what, $85,60,40. So they kind of gave the broke, or excuse me, the breakdown of that, you know, where those numbers are coming from.
And the reason why the city's portion is higher is because it goes back that far and then there's interest and penalties?
But our letter only stated the last four years.
Correct.
So, you know, we're not...
So if you did that, it would be a much lower amount.
Right, so we're not, we're not in the hook for that by any means if they do decide to pursue selling it to Mr. Milkie.
Right.
We're only committed for four years.
Okay.
There again, I had no idea that it would back that far.
Yeah.
And it's kind of a shame. Why would the county continue to sit on a piece of property and pay out the other taxing entities' tax? I just don't understand that.
It doesn't make sense to me. I think the only reason why they would do it is because they view it as basically worthless, but they're still hurting themselves.
Yeah.
You know, so... And the norm is, I can tell you, all the counties around here, they're doing it after about three or four years is when they foreclose them.
Yeah. And I did reach out to former city attorney and now Judge Joe Shasha to find out where we stood with Mr. Buckles. I says, I had to refresh his memory. He says, yes. He said, as city attorney, I could not handle this at the time the city brought up the red flag about the accumulation of shingles on the lot down there. He said he had to turn it over to outside council because of the fact that he had worked for the Winnebagoes, so he had a conflict to interest. So our city attorney way back when turned it over to Bill Buckles, which I had, was the designated fire inspector for the City of Juneau as assistant chief. That was one of my duties. I had follow-up on all the inspections and stuff like that. So I was in constant communication with Mr. Buckles. He kept telling me, don't let the city spend a dime on this. He says, there's DNR funding out there for these kind of cleanups, and he says, I'll keep you in the loop. Now he was retired from, from law and I don't know where those records all went or whatever. I gotta say, I should have asked for something in writing from him. I think, Dave, I think we maybe received one piece, but I don't know, you know, how far back that went. That came through planning commission. Yeah, so we're sitting in a case where Joe's suggestion was, why all the kind of funding there is out there to clean it up? Usually that's tit for tat. I mean, you, you spend $50,000, we'll give you $50,000 or something like that. We're certainly not in a position where we want to do that. But I guess right now, it's a wait-and-see game. I'm sure Mr. Milkie's probably written it off as it's not going to happen because I guess the way they have to do it, even if they, they came up with a zero dollar, all the back taxes and all the wins all have to be satisfied before they could turn it over again. He's not willing to spend anything. He's willing to pay taxes from year one, from taking ownership, but from what sounds, from what I've gotten from their meetings, it sounds like, no, it's not a viable option. Kind of selling for him, you know, $1 or something like that because all the, all these other things are left to be cleaned up.
Well, they're not going to sell to anybody else either.
Well, that's just him, but the problem still exists.
Right.
Okay, enough on that. Okay, reading of the proclamation for fair housing. Okay, City of Juneau proclamation, fair housing commitment. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, enshrined in the federal law, the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. And whereas it is important, important to reaffirm the commitment of the City of Juneau regarding citizens' right to buy, sell, rent, or otherwise secure housing in the City of Juneau without regard to sex, race, religion, marital status, age, national origin, income, or financial status in confirmation with the Title VIII of the Civil Rights Action of 1968, AKA the federal fair housing law and state open housing law. Now therefore, I, Daniel Wagner, Mayor of the City of Juneau, on behalf of the city and its residents, hereby proclaim commitment to the fair housing and encourage all housing providers to support and affirm their commitment to fair housing. Date of this day, 1922, or 1922, will entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Foodie, second by, by Grattan, to promote the City of Juneau proclamation for fair housing. Any further discussion on that? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Oak Street bid results. Jason, I'll turn it over to you on that one.
All right. Megan, I'm ready to assume that everyone received like the bid results and stuff in their packets?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So... Yep, so as you all probably saw, we received three bids in the project. Soapers, sewer, and water out of Oshkosh was the low bidder on the project. We also included, as kind of our discussion from before, we included two bid alternates in this. There was the base bid, which is just for the roadway, Oak Street base bid work, whatever, which would be the sewer, water, storm, and roadway improvements within the portion of the, of the project that the city owns the right-of-way for. And then we had an alternative, alternate item A and an alternate item B. The alternate item A was for the temporary road access out to Center Street if we would have been able to work something out with the Strassmans there. And then alternate B was for the installation of the cul-de-sac into the Strassmans land. So with that deal not proceeding, we're likely just to proceed with the base bid at this point unless there's any further questions or discussions on that point.
Any questions for Jason? The small amount of the smaller cul-de-sac that you're going to make that's going to affect that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it'll affect the base bid, but I mean, if you look at that, that alternate B dollar amount, I mean, that was for a full-size cul-de-sac, so we wouldn't be, you know, it would be under that value is what we would be essentially at, roughly speaking. Like maybe, I don't know, maybe half of that or something along those lines.
How much should we roughly save by, by eliminating the cul-de-sac, you know?
If, if, well, that, that item of, of alternate B is $54,849.50.
But did anyone stress the fact that that didn't happen, their base bid would be more?
No.
By not able to get in on that end?
No, I mean, you can, well, you can see that of the three bids, if you're looking at their, at their, that spreadsheet, whatever, Woleski Construction, which was the highest bidder, whatever, they were the only ones that basically said, okay, well, if you give us that secondary access, we're going to put it in for free, which is, which was kind of essentially their discount by saying, okay, by us putting in that temporary access, we see the value in that, you know, not allowing us to do the other work more effectively, so therefore, we won't charge you anything to put in the access road items. But the other, the other two contractors, you can see the, the, the low bid and then the middle bid, both of them basically had a dollar value associated with that access road. So essentially, what they're implying is that there's not really a, a, a cost savings that they're willing to recognize, whatever, by putting the access road in. Although verbally, they both said how, you know, the job will go a lot easier if they had the secondary access road, but it's not really reflected in the dollars, in their, in their unit prices, whatever, to that effect, so...
What do you know about the contractor?
We've worked with them on a couple of other projects. They were the, their more recent one that we have experience with is the spring of this year into last year, whatever. They worked on the, that Dollar General project over in the village of Eususford along Highway 60.
Okay.
So they did that road extension. They helped with the site work, whatever, associated with the Dollar General, and they did a good job over there. The village is real happy with the work they did. And they've also done some other work in our area too over the years. So, so nothing, nothing negative to say about them.
Any explanation why our Highland Street contractor wouldn't have been more competitive?
Nothing more, I guess, than we've discussed before, so...
Just kind of funny. You would think that you're, you're doing one street and you really, you'd have the, the advantage of being able to continue on, I would think, unless, did he state that his, he was just booked or?
No, I mean, he, he just said, these, these are the numbers that they, that they thought, you know, with, you know, incorporating the fact that they would be in town working on it, so it's just...
Yeah, I mean, logic just doesn't seem to settle there.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, I guess maybe, maybe they didn't want it as badly as we would have thought they would ever, yeah, I mean, I would have thought they would have been a little bit more competitive on it. I mean, they're, they are a fair, a fair amount of money higher than, than the low bidder, to say the least. If it was maybe, they were only a few bucks off, whatever, or something like that, or even a few thousand off, whatever, I could say, okay, you know, they gave it their best shot and they just came up a little short, but they're pretty significantly over.
Yeah. Any other questions on the bid results? Okay, if not, we move on to Resolution 28, 2022. Cheryl, would you like to read that? I thought it was lining up. Resolution 28, 2022. Resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers under Section...
City of Juneau, Wisconsin, Resolution 28, 2022. Preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers under Section 66.0703, Wisconsin statutes. Now therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the City of Juneau, Wisconsin, hereby declares its intention to exercise its police power under Section 66.0703, Wisconsin statutes, to levy special assessments upon properties located in the following described area for benefits conferred upon such properties by the following improvements. Areas to be improved in nature of improvements. A, the assessment district is all property rented upon both sides of the following street, or streets, or portions of streets. East Oak Street commencing at the intersection with Highland Street, running east to that end within the City of Juneau, Dutch County, Wisconsin. The assessment district includes the following tax parcels. Dash 22, dash 23, dash 24, dash 25, dash 26, dash 27, dash 28, dash 29, dash 030, dash 031, dash 033, dash 034, dash 035, dash 036, dash 046, dash 051, dash 052, dash 055, dash 056, dash 057, dash 059, dash 060, dash 061, dash 062, dash 063, dash 064, dash 065. Reconstruction improvements include that are not limited to the following. Sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, concrete curb and garden, concrete sidewalk, concrete driveway aprons, concrete asphalt gravel driveway aprons, asphalt street pavement, turf restoration, and other related construction. Total non-assessed against such districts should not exceed the total cost of the improvements. Common council determines that such improvements shall be made under the police power and non-assessed against said parcels should be reviewed and approved by the common council at the time of the public hearing. City engineer is directed to prepare a report consisting of preliminary plans for said improvements, an estimate of the entire cost of the proposed improvements, a schedule of proposed estimated assessments, the finding of whether or not the abutting properties are benefited by the proposed improvements. Upon completing the report, the city engineer is directed to file a copy thereof in the city clerk's office for public inspection. The city clerk shall cause notice to be given stating the nature of the proposed improvements, the general boundary of the proposed assessment district, the time and place at which the report... report may be expected, and the time and place of the public hearing, and the matters contained in the agreement in the resolution and the report. This notice shall be published as a class of notice on the chapter ninety-five, Wisconsin statutes, and a copy shall be mailed at least ten days before the hearing to every property owner whose name appears on the assessment roll, whose post office address is known and can be ascertained with reasonable diligence. Public hearing shall be held at a place, date, and time set by the city clerk according to section sixty-six oh seven oh three, Wisconsin statutes, with the passage of Resolution twenty-eight twenty-two.
Motion by Brown, or second?
Second.
Second by Grant. Any further discussion? Are we on board with schedule on all of this, as far as, can we move that up, or that information, or not information meeting, but the assessment meeting?
The public hearing?
Yeah.
Um, I talked to Jason about that a little bit. Um, I haven't had a time to call him back due to training. I guess, you know, I talked to him and, and he verified that we have sixty days to accept the bid. Um, you know, my plan was to have it before the next council meeting, but if we wanted to do something additional, um, we could have a public hearing a different day. Um, I guess that would be up to, to you and your scheduling and.
Well, I'll be honest, I'm getting a little nervous. I mean, the Highland Street contractor is so slow in getting out of the blocks here and getting things rolling. I'm wondering, you know, we don't see light at the end of tunnel for Highland Street. I don't want to be digging into Oak Street if, you know.
Yeah, and the, the update I have on that is we've got our pre-construction meeting this next Monday with that contractor. Copeland and Keenest said that they might even be bringing in like traffic control and erosion control measures already at the end of this week, otherwise it would be early next week. And then their underground utility contractor, R.G. Schmidt, is planning on starting either the end of next week or by, for certain, whatever, the, the beginning of the, of the following, which would be like the twenty-fifth or some, whatever, whatever that week is.
Some result was gone. So I guess, like I said, if there's some way we can speed things up on the secondary part, or the Oak Street part, or that this, by all means, let's do that.
Yeah. I guess, I mean, we can, we can certainly do a special meeting. Um, I guess there's no problem with that. It would just be, the, the main thing is, is just making sure that we have the, the ten days notice before the public hearing accomplished, because that is a statute requirement.
I'll leave it up to you and Megan working on it.
Is the public hearing already set in this preliminary resolution?
Is it?
It can be, you're welcome.
That's not required.
You don't have to.
Okay.
But a lot of times it's done.
You're, you're saying that part of this, accepting this resolution, there'd be a date for the public hearing?
It's a public hearing date.
Yeah.
But it's the attorney saying it doesn't happen.
You don't have to, but, you know, you should be. It, it's good practice, I think, to do it. Not the part.
Okay. Any other questions in regards to that? Move on. Move on. Resolution twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, approved on aerial appointments. Whereas the mayor has diligently searched for individuals willing.
Did we have a first and second? I, this resolution, we did have a first and second.
Oh, I didn't call the question.
No, we did. We need a roll call.
Out the roll call.
Brown.
Hi.
Grant.
Hi.
Evans.
Hootie.
Hi.
Ross.
Uh, Schuster.
Hi.
I guess I got off track. Okay, go ahead.
Um, I guess one other question, like, as you mentioned, in, in the idea of trying to keep the contractor on the Oak Street project maybe moving along, obviously, the typical or the common practice would be after we have the public hearing, that's when the project is officially awarded to the contractor. But I mean, if, if there is, I mean, if you guys are fairly confident that that's gonna move ahead, I mean, should they, should that, can I give the contractor a verbal kind of go-ahead where they can maybe start ordering their materials and stuff like that, so they can avoid some of those lead times? Or, or is that something that we're not prepared to necessarily indicate to them yet at this point?
Well, the outside funding for the Highland Street project is, is contingent upon their completion date of what, October what?
October, uh, October thirty-first, I believe it is, the end, the end of October.
And obviously, we're not gonna have two contractors fighting for position in there. The second contractor's not gonna start until that done date of the, of the Highland Street contractor?
Not necessarily. They could work, they could be working out there. If, if both of them want to, they just have to work, work together and not get in each other's way. And then obviously, I would say, if, if we do allow them to work at the same time out there, whatever, I, I would say that precedent should be given probably to the Highland Street project, because that's tied to the grant money.
And all the utility infrastructure has to tie off the Highland Street project, so he can't do too much other than taking down trees and remove curb gutter and whatever, but we'd like to maintain a driving surface as long as we can there.
Right, correct. And, and I guess that maybe goes back a little bit to the, the discussion that we had about trying to, you know, force the public hearing sooner, because that, that public hearing is, um, you know, is, is, I guess, important, whatever, but that, that public hearing is, is related to the Oak Street project, which, again, um, we don't wanna hold the show up, but on the same token, whatever, if, if we don't want those contractors tripping over each other, we wanna give the Highland contractor a chance to get a head start, you know, again, that, that Highland, or the Oak Street contractor, Sofer, if that's who we decide to move ahead with, whatever, they might wanna let Copeland and Keenest get a head start on Highland before they would even think about coming in there, whatever, so that they don't get too ahead of them, and now they're in a position where they can't hook up to things because there's not anything to hook up to.
Right, right.
I guess my concern as well would be, so we're doing the public hearing, you know, and, you know, we're doing, we're going through that process, but it's, the bid still needs to be accepted by council.
Yeah, we have those other resolutions to approve.
So we wouldn't be able to do that till the next council meeting anyways.
That's fine.
So that's kind of where I was going with this. So I mean, with everything that needs to be done with the special assessments and the bid results need to be approved by council, having a special public hearing, I guess, didn't really, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't save us any time unless, unless you guys were to hold a special council meeting after that public hearing.
Right.
Otherwise, if we're still gonna wait till the next regularly scheduled council meeting, we can wait, then we can just postpone, I shouldn't say postpone, but we should, we can wait certainly to have a public hearing before that next, next regularly scheduled council meeting, because again, we need both of those meetings to take place in order to do what we need to do to turn the contractor loose on the Oak Street project with the paper, from the paperwork side of it, where we actually physically award them the work.
Yeah. No, I think, I think it's gonna work out in the end anyway.
Yeah.
And Megan is revealed, but we do have financing for this, this project. That was part of the borrowing. Any other questions on that? See none, we'll move on to Resolution twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. Whereas the mayor has diligently searched for individuals willing to give themselves by serving on the library board, and whereas the mayor wishes to make the following appointment, Jean Han, term expires seven of twenty-twenty-four. Now therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the City of Juneau this twelfth day of July twenty-twenty-two. I entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Kay, second by Richard. Any further discussion? Would you like to say something, Jeanette? Um, Jeanette's kind of the recruiter for her library board. I mean, she put it in her hands, I don't wanna bring anybody in that she can't get along with, you know, how tough she is.
Well, Jean is a close neighbor. She's right here on the corner of Fairfield and Jewel, and a user of our library, a educator that teaches in the Eustisford School District, and so she chooses to use her home library for her classroom. Just obviously an advocate of literacy as a kindergarten teacher, and in an age bracket younger than me. So I love that we have people on the board that represent many different ages and uses of the library, and I think Jean is going to bring a great representation. Obviously, she's a professional, so she can, uh, speak into that as well. We do have a few other educators on the board, too, so I think we'll all play nice together.
All right.
Should we speak to H.J. H. Chan? Because he's a teacher there. My husband's a teacher there.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's the H.J. H. Chan?
It's spelled like the last.
So I think we got it from an email.
Yeah, I'm, I believe that's what, yeah, I've, I've gone to their email addresses at Eustisford. I'll verify it. Um, yeah.
We'll take it as it is, please, here.
Yeah, pardon me, yeah, yeah. Yep.
Then motion to second, what's our vote for?
Ross.
Hi.
Evans.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Hootie.
Hi.
Grant.
Hi.
Schuster.
Hi.
Resolution twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two has passed. We actually have third pressure, anything to report?
Um, just a couple things. Uh, Curs and Chargers Institute has started yesterday, so Haley and myself have been busy with that. Um, going well. Uh, we started implementing the domain change. Um, emails have been, being swapped over. Um, you will continue to receive emails through your old email address, but they will be now, like I said before, at cityofjunowwi.gov. We will get you all set up, 'cause you will need to meet with Javis to get your email all tip-top shape, so we will, we'll work on that. But I, our website will also be cityofjunowwi.gov, so.
Send us.
All as well. Yeah, she's, that's it? That's all I can report?
Any questions for the clerk? See none, moving on to written reports. You have the building permit report, police department, Bureau of Fire and Rescue, Juneau EMS report. Any questions on any of them? See none, we'll move on. Reports, commissions, committees, commissions, and boards. Jeanette, you're up.
Wow. Third time you get to see me. All right, so last Friday, we had a community event, co-sponsored by the Juneau Public Library and the Juneau Recreation Department, and lots of help from Parks and, or, from Public Works as well, but sponsored by Edward Jones and the financial advisor Andrew Meehan. And we watched Honey, I Shrunk the Kids. So, um, I'm gonna pass some this way and this way. Here is our next centerfield cinema title sponsored by Future All-Star Academy, and they would like to show Moana. So the second Friday of every month, it, we have four scheduled this summer, is our centerfield cinema. And because the sun will set a little faster in August, uh, we will start this movie at eight-thirty instead of nine o'clock. Uh, come on out and support through concessions and just your presence. Um, I just have a few things to share. We are still in the middle of our summer reading program over at the library. People are completing this. I am seeing people coming out of the pandemic and looking for these sorts of things to do, and it's very encouraging. And when I think of what just happened with Mr. Yonkey and this amazing donation from the Piggly Wiggly, and how we can continue to provide through that funding, things that can enrich our community. It will be fun to dream with that money, on what we can use that for. So thank you, Dan, and the Piggly Wiggly organization. So summer reading concludes at the end of Ju- July, like Dan said, so first, like, going fast. Um, and, uh, we have a few things going on. We are showing Jaws, yeah, the nineteen seventy-five classic that made no one want to go into the water that year, and then when you watch it in two thousand twenty-two, you go, that's fake. But come on out to the library, this is an indoor movie, and we'll be showing this on Monday, July eighteenth, at six o'clock at night. We do have more children-friendly movies that we're showing in the afternoon every Thursday. This is this Thursday's movie, Luca, and these are shown at one o'clock in the afternoon on Thursdays. And we have a brand-new story walk. This story, Sharky McShark, is on display outdoors around the basketball court, basketball tennis courts. So we have those attached to the chain link fence, and you can walk around the perimeter and read the entire story. Last month's was, um, attached to the Little League field and the chain link fence around there. This is something that we just like in summer, people want to be outside, and so we want to champion the library even outside our walls, and that's how we're doing that. I have an exciting thing to share with you, maybe I've shared it with you before, but , um, the Monarch Library System received a considerable grant that is bringing RFID technology to eleven libraries in our system, and the Juneau Pub, Public Library is one of them. So RFID, I have to write it down, it's an acronym, stands for radio frequency identification. You all know what it is. It's the little magnet strip that, um, is on items in some libraries and will soon be in yours. I'm just bringing an example from Cedarburg, it's a little magnetic strip that they have on there, and the cool technology is not necessarily that this is for theft prevention, although it can be, it's for ease of, um, checking in items and checking out items. We will eventually, through this funding, have a self-checkout station where if you were to come in, you scan your own card, you place your items that have that magnetic strip in it on the platform, and it checks it out. Now, our goal is not to not have face-to-face interaction. A, there will be many people that will still choose to interact with that librarian at the desk, and we hope they do. But the next thing is patron privacy. If you're checking out something and you're struggling with something and you're reading some books about that to help you through, this might be an interaction that you want to make private. It is a small town. We are tight-lipped librarians, but your privacy matters. So if you want to self-checkout, or there's a line at the library and you just have, I wanna go in, check out, and walk out, all this will be possible with this. Another benefit is so many libraries in our system already have this technology, and eleven more will be getting this, it makes their efficiency better as well. They now can set it on the pad and check in when our materials go there. And when I think of libraries as large as Cedarburg, which is this item here, you know, eleven more libraries that they can speed up that process just helps us all become a better team. So, uh, look forward to that. That will be a big project and one that will be under, will be trained in in August and then be implementing here in the fall. So any questions for your library director?
Any update in the AC?
Yes, there is an update. If you drive through our, um, our circular drive there, there is a barrier. Yes, so, uh, Public Works built us a two-sided barrier, and, um, we have seen a reduction in the noise, the decibel levels, and just today, J&amp;H Controls, which is our contracted company for maintenance of that device or of that equipment, um, installed a compressor cover that, uh, we're going to see if that also reduces the sound. So that was something he. So that was something he personally said, I'd like to see what this does. So, because if it benefits, then we can look on if we would get a second cover or if one is enough, and if it doesn't work well, then he'll take it back. So our neighbor is satisfied, and if you drive by, it hasn't been water-treated yet, but it's beautiful, it's cedar, and it looks very nice and attractive there on that corner of the library.
Doesn't do as good a job as my van that morning.
I, I thought the circus had come to town that time.
Cut it right down.
It did. It did its job, but you needed to drive your van.
Yeah, we couldn't leave it.
Yeah, you couldn't leave it there permanently.
Any other questions for Jeanette?
Thank you, Mayor, for your help in that. All right?
Okay, thank you.
Have a great meeting.
Moving on, plant commission.
David?
We did meet, and we discussed the high water level out in the White Pine subdivision on North Highland Street. What we did is, after much discussion, we looked at the possibility of putting a sump pump, a pump into the pit that's there, and it would actually pump the water away from, to the storm sewer from the pit that's already there. Although we needed to recommend it to finance because we don't have money in plant commission to do that kind of activity, so we sent that finance to people of that capacity, capability of doing that. We also had QuickTrip was there. They would like to replace their gas canopy with a new lighted one. We had good discussion on that. They also want to replace both gas tanks. They are older and they are underneath the canopy now between the four pumps. They will be put to the north side of the canopy, and they had said that they were going to have three different types of fuel. They have premium, regular, gas, and Esa fuel. Then we discussed QuickTrip connecting from the canopy, the roof drains, rather than running across where people are standing trying to pump fuel, who would run down underground and connect right into the storm sewer so that ice wouldn't be there in the wintertime, which I thought was a wonderful, like, safety direction to have go on and go back. We're taking a possibility, taking action on abandoning utility easements on automated pet cares parcel. That was going to be abandoned. They get out to the street right up the main where it's supposed to be disconnected. We discussed a possible driveway approach, added, added a driveway approach for one forty-three South Fairfield Avenue, and after discussion with the gentleman, he's going to use the present driveway approach he has and put a parking area on his property so he will not require any action from the city on that through anyone other than the building inspector. That was our meeting. We were given paperwork from Public Safety for possible having chickens in town. So we're reading what other cities have had for chickens and we'll see what happens next month.
Any questions for Dave? Moving on, final, Cheryl.
We did meet. One of our requests this, this month at our meeting was to go over our proposals for waste management. I see we have a gentleman here from Pelletieri this morning or this evening with us. We had one representative from LRS Badgerland disposing here with us, using Malang here with us. We had been given the quotes, the request for proposals from all of the different businesses that sent them in to us, so we had gone over those prior to our meeting. By looking at what we had and the costs and what we could get, where we would go, potentially be additional cost for fuel surcharges for our bulk pickup, requesting each of them to be consistent with what we have right now. We are recommending to go with LRS Badgerland based upon price, based upon the services that they are willing to provide for us. And Mr. May, may I ask, the gentleman from Pelletieri presents still at this point?
You sure can.
That opportunity?